Hey Barry, can you hear me?
Hey Joan, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. You know, it's funny, I haven't used this so long, I couldn't remember my password. I'm like, how the heck do I get into the laptop?
So to make sure the volume was good.
Yeah. What a beautiful day, huh?
Yeah. I didn't see much of it, but yeah, it's beautiful.
Yeah. I've had a green pool for three weeks.
Oh no.
So I finally threw in the towel and I said, that's it, I'm draining out the water. I gave up.
Ah.
Yeah, $1,200 worth of green to clean, yellow to clean, you know, bactericide, this, that, and the other thing.
A little shock does wonders.
I think leprechauns are sneaking in my yard and peeing in there in the middle of the night or something, I don't know.
You'd be surprised if you have a camera back there, well, you do find.
I don't even want to put a camera back there, you know, who knows? It's probably the deer.
Yeah.
Hey Mike, how's Kelsey? Can't hear you, you're muted.
I bet it out, got it? Yeah.
Yep, good.
Yeah, she's gonna be on blood thinners for anywhere from 90 to 180 days. They gave her like 10 days off from work. She's gonna start seeing a doctor somewhere here, as a referral from New York City. And they're still trying to get to the bottom cause of it. They have a couple ideas, but they don't really know what the cause was. So they said it'll take a couple months before they understand what happened. But she's in pretty good shape. She's weak and tired, but she's around.
Oh good, I'm glad to hear it.
Yep, thank you.
Sorry she had to go through that, though.
It was fast. Tuesday morning she was fine, Tuesday night Columbia Presbyterian.
Wow, amazing.
River View worked really well, too. They made all the arrangements before they even came in. They came into the room and said, look, this is the only place they can take care of her. We have a truck coming.
That's good, yeah. Yeah, I've had good experiences there.
Hey Joan?
Yeah.
Is this the closed session we're in, or is this...
No, we have to open, we have to open the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Chris, is the video, is Zoom live or not yet?
Yes.
I think it's live. It is, okay.
Hey, so we could start?
Yes, you may.
All right, here we go. Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the Augustine Minor Administrative Offices and E Elementary, Middle, and Secondary School website in the district. Roll call.
This is Caminiti.
Here.
Mr. Donlin.
Here.
Mr. Jaimo.
Here.
Mr. Heffernan.
Here.
Mr. Little.
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco. Mrs. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Capone.
Here.
Mrs. Minuys.
Here. I need a motion to go into executive session to review matters related to mold, contracts, personnel, litigation.
Download.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. See everybody in closed session.
Is everybody here?
Yes.
Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Esberry Park Press, the Middletown Act, and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle, and secondary school website in the district. Your call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. Donlin? Mr. Donlin? Oh, you're muted, Mr. Donlin.
Here.
Mr. Jaimo?
Here.
Mr. Heffernan?
Here.
Mr. Little? Okay, you're muted, Mr. Little, but I see you. Mrs. Tobacco? Mr. Capone?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Minewes?
Here. Can we all please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, we're going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Walker and Mrs. Doherty.
Good morning, oh, good evening, everyone. We were held in this meeting so that we can give you some more information. Since we learned about this and, you know, started to work on it, the testing and the remediation, it's been about four days. So I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Doherty, who's going to give you an update on, you know, where we are right now.
So, good evening, everyone. So, good evening, good evening, everyone. As most of you know, if you've been reading our communications out from the district, we did identify surface mold at Linkcroft Elementary School, which is the first place where we started to notice that there was an issue. As a result of that, we did take some remedial steps in-house to remediate that. And then we called in an environmental firm to do some testing to make sure that that was sufficient. As a result of the analysis, and after a few days have passed, we noticed that the mold issue was not remediated, and that we were going to have to expand our remediation efforts and our analysis and evaluation to the entire building. So, in the course of doing that, we did bring on an environmental consultant. We also had brought in a remediation firm to work with us in those efforts. At the same time we were doing that, it was discovered over at Nut Swamp Elementary School by a teacher who was coming in to set up their classroom, and that they noticed some mold over there. So we immediately had the environmental consultant and our remediation firm look at that school, and surface mold has been identified at that school as well. So that's another, that was another school that we were looking at as far as getting evaluation, testing, and remediation efforts started. So, we have had our environmental consultant here and Servpro working at, they've already mobilized at Linkcroft Elementary School, and remediation efforts have started at that school, classroom by classroom. At the same time, you know, they will be also mobilizing at Nut Swamp Elementary School to address those classrooms as well. But as administrative team, once we determined that we had identified issues in two schools, we felt that the prudent thing to do would be to expand the environmental consultant's inspection and testing to all of our buildings, just to make sure that we didn't, we weren't overlooking anything in any other schools that may not have been evident, you know, to us right now. So we did hire the environmental consultant to come out and do testing and evaluation of all of our schools. So they are in the process now of working through the district, building by building. They have a few teams out within the district, looking at these schools, doing testing samples, submitting those samples on a daily basis. So we're getting them back on a rolling basis to determine if there is any, if there are any indications of a mold issue in other buildings that would need to be addressed. Today, we did get results back and also inspections that caused us to communicate out to the school communities of Navasink and also New Mammoth Elementary Schools. There's been surface mold identified in those buildings. So at this time, you know, our status is that we have the environmental consultant working through the district and doing testing and submitting the testing to the lab. We're getting the results back, and we're in the process of evaluating all of the buildings throughout the district. The other areas that they did look at and got clearance on, you know, to use, where we did some targeted areas in the high schools, because we do have some activities going on there that we wanted to be able to facilitate, if possible. So we did get results back on the targeted areas we did at the high schools, which included the locker rooms for, and the cafeteria, and the bubbles and so forth. And we were able to get clearance on those specific areas in the high schools, which I believe they, they did use the locker rooms today for the football games that went on at the schools. But at this point, we are really, you know, waiting to see, you know, what our consultant comes up with as far as results of testing and observations throughout the buildings. And we're really in the information gathering stages on the rest of the buildings throughout the district. We will have crews on site throughout the weekend at Linkcroft and Nut Swamp, working on those schools as far as remediation efforts go. Like I said, they've already started at Linkcroft and have gotten through multiple classrooms at Linkcroft, doing cleaning and remediation efforts. And they will be doing, some classrooms where there's more work to be done will take them longer. Other classrooms, if nothing was really indicated, or if it was, you know, something that could be cleared just with testing, you know, they'll move on. But the remediation efforts would include, not just looking at the furniture and things like that, but also addressing the HVAC units in the, in the rooms as well. You know, that they would be cleaned and, and, you know, HEPA vacuumed and treated, you know, as appropriate if it's, you know, deemed necessary by the consultant. So what happens in each room will differ depending upon the condition of the room. But they, all the rooms are being looked at thoroughly. If there's no evidence of mold in a room, they are still, they're being tested. All the rooms are being tested. They're being air sampled and surface tape lift sampled in multiple spots to see, you know, if there's anything there that isn't visible to, you know, by just looking. So they are all going to be addressed in that way. And, you know, we are in the process of evaluating the rest of the buildings. They will also be tested after any remediation efforts have taken place to make sure that those remediation efforts have been successful. No room will be cleared for occupancy until our certified industrial hygienist, our consultant, has reviewed the results and cleared the room for occupancy. So we will not be, you know, allowing any occupancy of rooms until that happens.
Do you want to say something about what, moving forward? Like, you know, how we're going to ensure that this isn't a problem?
So, so yeah, right. So our approach right now is twofold. We are working on the immediate remediation efforts and the immediate identification of any issues in buildings. But we also need to address how to stabilize the climate in the buildings where we are finding issues, such as Linkcroft and Nut Swamp and a couple of the other elementaries that, you know, that we've mentioned. You know, the problem is really that the air in the buildings is moist. You know, there's a high level of humidity in these rooms. And in order to combat that, you know, we need to find a way with the HVAC units that we have and other tools that we can get to use at our disposal to balance the climate in the room. So one of the recommendations that's been made is investment in commercial-grade dehumidifiers so that we would have that ability to dispose those to rooms or areas of schools where we felt the humidity was getting to a point where it wasn't beneficial for the building. So, you know, the district is currently in the process of obtaining those units. We do have, Servpro has also brought a number of them into the district to stabilize the climate in the buildings throughout the district so that we can get, get the moisture out of the air. But, you know, we are trying, we're doing this as a two-pronged approach. We're addressing the current problem, and we're also getting recommendations to work with the systems that we have to stabilize the, you know, the humidity and the air, you know, the air in the building. He typically, you know, that our consultant has advised us that unfortunately, the conditions that will cause this kind of a problem typically show up in this late August through early October timeframe. So it's, it's something that can come on very quickly and has come on very quickly. We actually have seen changes in buildings over a couple of days' time as we've been, you know, starting to deal with this issue. So it's something that, you know, it happens when the environment outside, you know, the air outside is conducive to, you know, when that comes into the building, you know, causing issues within the building unless we can work to keep the humidity down.
That, that pretty much, you know, is the update. Um, you know, we will take questions and we'll, we'll, you know, we'll answer them the best we can with what we know at this time. Like Mrs. Doherty said, the, the testing is still ongoing. So, you know, we don't have a full picture yet, but, um, if anybody has questions.
Mr. Vitolo, if people have their hand raised, could you, um, direct it to Mrs. Walker?
Yes. If anybody would like to ask a question, there should be a hand raise icon at the bottom of your dashboard. If you're dialing in, you can also press star nine on your phone. It'll have the same effect, and we can bring you in to ask your question. But we will start off with Megan Callis.
Thank you for taking my question and for holding this meeting. I have sources that tell me that this mold issue has actually been an issue for over 45 years. That's coming from a retired teacher. So I want to find out what you have done as a school district to adjust mold in the past. Also, since I have worked as an industrial hygienist, I have a list of about 20 questions that, of course, you cannot answer during this meeting. You don't have enough time. Who should I submit that to? And what environmental consultant are you using?
Okay, that was a lot.
Well, go ahead, Mary.
No, you go ahead.
If I can remember, I'll answer your last question first. We're working with RK Occupational and Environmental Consultants, specifically Mike McGinnis. He's a certified industrial hygienist and has much experience working with many different types of buildings and many school districts throughout the state, and has a vast resume of experience dealing with these types of issues. And we have worked with him as a, as a district in the past as well. As far as, you know, your reference to 45 years of mold issues, I really can't speak to that. I've been in the district almost 11 years. You know, occasionally, there's, you know, small issues, you know, in various buildings where we've had, you know, a consultant come in and we've handled. And, but certainly nothing of this type of magnitude, you know, it has happened, you know, in, in, as far as my knowledge goes. But again, I can't speak to 45 years back. I don't know what happened at that time. But in the, in the 10 or 11 years since I've been here, you know, this, this year, you know, for a variety of reasons, you know, the, the climate in the buildings is, you know, seems to have induced, you know, a larger growth of mold, you know, than we've experienced.
And you can, you can send your questions to Mrs. Doherty and myself, and we'll try to get them through for you, okay?
Okay, next is Vera Pasake.
Hi, Pasake, Ashar Drive, Middletown. Thank you for holding this meeting. I have to say, after hearing the update, I didn't kind of get a warm fuzzy feeling that we would be starting September 13th. So I guess a question, I guess the elementary schools, their AC systems, I believe, are older. Would we have a possibility, if the issue is, is focused on elementary level, that we can uncouple and let the secondary schools start? If they are deemed to be clean, as well as letting teachers in or whoever needs to be let in as soon as the buildings get a clean of health? Thanks.
Vera, yeah, um, you know, we're, we're still getting tests back. More than half our schools, we haven't even gotten tests back from. So, you know, it's, it's way too early to start thinking about that, I would think. But, you know, I don't see why not. It's just some, something that we would have to discuss. But right now, we're just kind of waiting on our test results, and we'll see.
Next, we have Kate Harley.
Hi. I'd like to know what the contingency plan is for starting all students in person on September 13th, assuming that other schools do come back as having some mold and there are some issues in certain classrooms. Will you be bringing in trailers? Will you be housing classes in APR rooms, in cafeterias? What's the plan? Because I'm sure it's not pushing school off further than September 13th.
But like I just said, we're, we're waiting for our test results. And, you know, that, right now, we're, that's what we're doing. I mean, I think we have test results on just, just the few elementary schools, four or five that...
And the targeted areas of the high schools that we looked at.
Targeted areas, the high schools that were okay. Yeah.
Next is Jamie Sannicor.
Hi, yeah, thanks for taking my question. So what is, what has been the audit mechanism in the past for detecting mold? And what is the audit mechanism going forward to detect future problems in our facilities?
If you mean by audit mechanism, just how we would identify surface mold, there would be, I mean, obviously, the first indication of it would be by visual inspection, you know, and to see if there was any indication of any, any mold growth, you know, that we would need to investigate. I mean, that, that would always be your first, you know, the first way you would, you would identify it.
But as Mrs. Doherty was saying, moving forward, we're working with our, with our consultant to, you know, find ways to not only prevent, but to, like you say, to trigger, you know, us to be more alert for it, like when humidity levels get to a certain point, you know, in, in a room, that we would, you know, we would, you know, know that, you know, there's something going on that we have to reduce the moisture or else mold will grow.
Okay, next we have Dennis. Dennis, we want to have a last name. If you could please provide it for the record, that would be great.
Really good evening, Dennis Deans. I'm the parent of two South High School students. And my question is specific to remote learning. So why was the decision made to delay the start of the year versus allowing a remote start? And is there a plan for remote learning if the delay is extended past the 13th?
The reason we decided, actually, this was a very long discussion between the committee and administration, and we actually decided remote first, and then we, we kind of talked ourselves out of it because of it being at the beginning of the year. We were able to quickly, you know, pivot to remote in March, a couple of years ago, two years ago. And that's because those classes had been running. The teachers had built relationships. Everybody had their Chromebooks. That's not the case right now, especially at the elementary level. It would be the most difficult to have teachers meet students for the first time. Students feel comfortable with that teacher, you know. And so we, we thought a three-day delay and a regular start to the school year was better than just starting for three days remotely.
Okay, next is Princess Kilty.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. When do you anticipate the results?
We are supposed to get the results by Tuesday, I think Tuesday night or early Wednesday, for everything. But they're rolling. And Mrs., I think Mrs. Doherty said that. They're rolling. Every, every night, the tests are done. They're dropped off that lab. And then, and then they're, you know, as soon as they're...
You know, as soon as the lab can turn them around. We've, you know, we've been told 24, the 48-hour turnaround time. You know, we, our consultant works with a lab that, you know, he has a good relationship with as far as getting work prioritized. Although we've all been given the caveat of, given what's transpired in New Jersey over the past 24 hours with the flooding and so forth. You know, if we have to expand other labs, we will. But, you know, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of testing and similar work going on throughout the state.
Next is Ashley Stud.
My question is, when, what's the worst-case scenario? As a working mom, I'm trying to forecast out needing more childcare, and I'd like to know if this is going to extend and what I'm looking at.
I don't, I don't think we really have an answer to that right now. Right now, um, you know, we're, we're trying to achieve our goal of Monday at all of our schools. We won't open the doors unless we, you know, get the okay and know it's, you know, safe for our students. But like I said, we're still trying to achieve that goal of September 13th for all our schools.
Okay, next is Laura. Laura, we don't have a last name for for them. So if you could please provide it for the record, that would be wonderful.
Hi, this is Laura Akt. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um I thought I had heard earlier today at the um Nut Swamp communication session that remediation efforts were already taking place at Nut Swamp. And then tonight, it sounds like only testing has been done at Nut Swamp. So I just wanted to get some clarification on that.
No, it we that there's been remediation efforts started in Nut Swamp as well.
Okay, next is Pamela. Again, don't have a last name. So if you could please provide it for the record, that would be great. And also just have to unmute. Hello, Pamela. Just have to unmute your mic. Okay, Pamela may be having some difficulties with her microphone. We'll keep her in the queue, but we will uh move down the list to Stacy Jones.
Hi, um to follow up, I guess you said that all results are coming in on a rolling basis and will be in by Tuesday or Wednesday. So I guess what I'm unclear on at this point, and I would appreciate some insight on, is the schools that have identified mold and are having remediation done and then follow-up subsequent testing. What is the timeframe for that work to be done? So for example, if you identify in another school in the district that you have a similar issue, but you don't receive that information until Tuesday or Wednesday, what is the timeframe for that remediation work to take place and be retested in terms of your targeted September thirteenth opening?
We would have to, you know, it again, it would, we wouldn't be able to say exactly because it would depend upon, you know, what needed to be addressed at the at that particular school uh and the extent of the work to be done. And then, you know, the process of retesting after the work was done. So you know, as we get more information, uh we will certainly be working with our consultant and with our remediation firm to expand uh the efforts if necessary uh next week and get more people in in district to address these issues, you know, with our September thirteenth target date in mind.
Okay, next we have Kate Farley.
Hi, yeah, thanks for taking my question. Again, I wasn't able to ask everything I wanted before. I just wanted to get some clarity. So what I'm hearing you say is that there is no contingency plan for the possibility that the test results could come back showing that there is more mold in different schools that needs to be remediated, or that the remediated mold has not been properly remediated in the existing schools that we already know about. And so therefore, the plan is if we we can hope and pray that it's going to come out okay, but if it doesn't, we're not starting school in person on September thirteenth. You're not coming up with any additional contingencies, like putting them in different locations, in buildings that have been cleared, or bringing in trailers or something else to house these students until these issues can be remediated, which by the way is what has been done in other districts that have had mold problems in the past. They figure out a place to put the students while certain classrooms are being dealt with. So I just wanted to get clarity there that, again, we have no plan other than let's hope there's no more mold and it's all fixed by the thirteenth.
Since day one, we have been trying to develop different plans just in case. And, you know, I'm not saying they're they're fully flushed out, but but we're working on them just in case. And we've been doing that since we we found out. But you know, at this point, it would be premature to say, and and there are multiple plans that, you know, depending on what we find. You know, if we if we find there's five classrooms in one school that we can't get to, then that's different than, you know, something else. But we're still, we're still looking at our, you know, trying to achieve our goal of nine thirteen. So we're not picking and choosing what we're going to do after that. I'm not saying we're not looking at things. We started looking at things and thinking about things and making plans day one, just in case.
Okay, next, I don't have a name for this account. Uh so if they could please provide it for the record, that would be wonderful. And just have to unmute your microphone.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, it's Kristen Rooney. Thanks for taking my question. Um, I was just wondering, what is, what is the, what is the cutoff date for when you think you're going to come up with a contingency plan? Because we're talking about maybe a week from school starting. So we really don't have a lot of time. And we're kind of trying to figure out what's going to happen if, you know, this doesn't get done in time. So do you have a cutoff of when you think you're going to let us know? Because we're trying to plan ahead.
As as you know, we're still, like I said, we're still working on the testing, so we don't know yet. Um, it's, you know, when we know, you know, we'll tell you. But like I said, we're still working on achieving that nine thirteen goal. If we get information that we can't, then we'll we'll, you know, we'll come out and give you our contingency plan. Um, you know, we only know so much now. We're actually planning on having another meeting next week to give you an update. Um, we're like four days into this right now. So a lot has been done. You know, we we've learned a lot, but there's still a lot, lot more to uh to learn and, you know, so this is kind of a would be a premature discussion right now.
Okay, next is Kelly Broden.
Hi. So forgive me if you've already said this. I lost my connection a little bit ago, but you're still waiting for reports on all of the schools other than the four that you've identified already. Number one. Number two, once you remediation is done on these schools that require it, will you be making those reports, giving the schools, you know, all clear? Will you be making those available to the public?
We have
Lastly, how are we making up these days that we're missing?
Okay. We actually have reports back or or assessments of four, I mean, of five so far that I I know of um of the schools. Um, and uh yes, we will, we will be coming up with, uh, you know, we will be providing information on the results of the tests. Um, you know, it before, like after the remediation's done, or the ones that didn't need to be remi- remediated, obviously, you know, both of them. And uh where we haven't decided how to make up the days yet. That's something that um you know, we've been, we've been kind of focusing on getting the the things remediated, but we know that's important to everybody. We know that it's important to our families who may have made plans or our staff. So we will be getting on that very shortly.
I have a last name, uh Buzler, uh on the next uh guest we'll bring in. They could please provide their full name for the record. That would be wonderful.
Sure, this is Mithra Bustler. Excuse me. Uh I'd just like to point out that the very same board majority that felt that some mold posed a serious enough health, health threat to pivot to a virtual board meeting has otherwise killed Zoom participation, wh- while the COVID pandemic still rages. We've had um al- almost seventeen hundred people in this county alone die from COVID and about six hundred and forty thousand people in the country, and this is still going on. Can we assume then that the board has come to its senses and will continue to allow Zoom participation in future meetings? Particularly particularly in light of the uh the flagrant violations at the last in-person meeting of the governor's executive order requiring masks to be worn at all times. Not everybody in the district who wants to participate can afford to play dice with their health by risking exposure to that sort of environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Carrie Barrero.
Hi, Carrie Barrero. I have two daughters at North. Um, so my question is, it's going to be another contingency plan question. Um so if there's anything catastrophic found, can we assume that nothing is off the table, like maybe opening some schools, or possibly if it's a big enough problem, we might switch to virtual, like nothing's off the table, right? Is that what we're kind of saying?
We are, we are looking at all possibilities. That's where we started last Monday. It's a discussion. We're doing research. Yes.
Okay, that that makes sense. And I want to thank whoever made the decision to hold this um via Zoom. The majority of people that you have on here tonight, I'm sure is more than what you ever see in person, because it's a very dangerous time in this state. Even in this town, our COVID numbers have doubled from last week. Our infection rate is double. So please continue the Zoom so that the majority of us can participate. We all know the September eleventh anniversary is coming up, twenty twentieth anniversary, right? You vowed never to forget. But people like my family, who are sick because of nine eleven, can't afford to come to your meetings in person. I can't afford to do that. It's unfair that you're not allowing the majority of this town to participate during a deadly pandemic because it's doesn't, you don't believe in science. It it's outrageous. It's self-serving. It's not a right. The people and the parents of Middletown have a right to be able to interact with our board. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have, I'm actually don't know if I have a name on this account. So if they can please provide it for the record, that would be great.
Hi, this is Lolly Tor. Uh I have a child at Thompson. Um, I had heard from some parents who have children at Lynn Croft that the the mold issue was known um in previous years. Uh and so I wanted to ask whether the board had known about the mold issue at Lynn Croft um from previous years. And then also when then, when the board then learned about this current issue with with Lynn Croft. And I also would just ask if you could answer the previous question that had been asked about whether or not the meetings will continue to be held via Zoom. Thank you.
Mrs. Doherty, can you explain about any mold issues in the district?
Well, I mean, asking about Lynn Croft, and I I believe you said that there was uh people saying that there was an issue last year. We, you know, we haven't had any issues where we've had to address uh this at Lynn Croft until, you know, this summer, you know, that as far as I can, as far as I know, you know, from when I've been here. I mean, we we have been looking at the building uh over the last uh week or so. And, you know, we did have um a couple of rooms impacted a a couple of weeks ago. And now, you know, that it's expanded to a few other rooms. But as far as, you know, the the previous year, you know, we didn't have an issue like this.
Next is Michelle Collins.
Hi, it's Michelle Collins from Lynn Croft. I also wanted to echo what everybody's been saying about keeping the Zoom platform. Um, the last couple of in-person meetings have been like a circus and a spectacle. Trying to hear what you guys have been saying from the YouTube feed has been merely impossible because all of the people shouting and bullying everybody in the background has muted the feed. Um, I think it's unfair that you guys won't continue to do this because, you know, everyone's not as privileged to be there in person during a pandemic. It's only fair to have everyone's voice heard, and the only way to do that is to offer this option. So I hope that you will continue to do that going forward. Thanks.
Next, uh we will bring in Valerie.
Thank you for taking my question. I have a question regarding that you said you have five schools that you know the results of. Can you please share those schools and have they been cleared? Because I have a son at Leonardo. I would like to know that he's okay. You haven't mentioned anything about the middle schools. And just to piggyback off of some other questions that have been brought up regarding um your contingency plans, I just want to make it set again. There should be, every plan should be put out on the table at this point. Um Port Monmouth is sitting there and is on being unused. And these children need to be back to a regular school year, back in their classrooms, and something needs to be done. And I know the thirteenth is a targeted date, but there are working parents, people are going back into work, and these kids need to be in school. They've lost enough learning time, and it's very important that they are back where they need to be. But like I said, are you going to share the the five schools that were cleared? And talk a little bit about the middle schools. Were they part of those lists as well? Thank you.
Well, for the schools, where the schools that we just talked about was uh Lynn Croft, Nut Swamp, New Monmouth, and Nava Sink. And then we also had um River Plaza, which actually was cleared. Those are the test results that we've received so far.
Okay, next we have Laura. Um Laura, if you could please provide your last name for the record, that would be wonderful. I think you just have to unmute, Laura.
Sorry, Laura Akt. Sorry, I got cut off before. Thank you for taking my call again. Um, I I know September thirteenth is the the date we're targeting, but as other parents have echoed, I'm extremely concerned. It's now November second, practically the third. We only have results back from five schools, four of which have issues. I'm not feeling very confident that the thirteenth is a reasonable date. And I think that there needs to be more communication and effort put into what the contingency plans are. Um, and then also, my other question was, do the teachers need to have their three professional in-service days before the the children can be brought back it into the school once we do start school?
Well, the the children, I mean, the children, the teachers have had, they're they're working, they're doing them virtually. So they're doing them right now. Though their three professional days will be done by Friday. They're doing all their their professional development virtually, so that um that's completed. And like I said, we're working on the the thirteenth, um you know, and we'll have more information next week. We'll have another meeting like this so that, you know, we can update you at that time. Um, and then we'll, you know, we'll, you know, we'll be able to know where we are better. Um, we'll get more test results back pretty much every day now. Pretty much all I information I have on that.
Next is Dana Brink.
Hi, I really would echo, especially what the last parent said um about teachers being able to get in the classroom prior to set up, especially at like the elementary level. They do a lot of work getting those classrooms set up for the kids to arrive. So are there going to be days for them to do that? If you're getting the results by next Wednesday? And again, if four out of five so far tested positive for mold, I mean, our, I'm not very confident either on the thirteenth. I guess my question is, have, in part of your contingency plan, have Chromebooks been ordered for all new and incoming students? So we are ready to go on the thirteenth, or?
Yes, we have, we have, we have Chromebooks for everybody. It's just they're at the elementaries, they don't keep them. At the high schools and middle schools, they can, or they can turn them, you know, keep them or turn them in for the summer, but the elementaries do not have them at home.
Okay, next we have RJ. I don't have a full name. So RJ, if you can provide your full name for the record, that would be great. And just have to unmute.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Jones. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Hi, I'm from Port Monmouth, and basically everybody's been saying the same things. I'm just really concerned about, like we said, about making up the days. And if you go past the thirteenth, I know you're saying especially for elementary age kids, it's hard to start them off the first few days as virtual. Um, but like we always like to say that the kids are so resilient. Is that really off the table for starting the kids that way? So we don't, or especially if it goes past the thirteenth?
We're we're discussing all options. We've we've been looking at all options at the beginning, doing research, you know, contingency plans. There's, there's nothing off the table.
Okay, next is Princess Kilty.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was on before. Thank you for giving me another chance to ask a question. Because just being so far from the issue, as we are hearing more throughout the night, it's just prompting some more questions. Can you just give us an idea of how pervasive you think the issue actually is? So in the five elementaries that you just mentioned, were, those were cases that were brought to your attention, correct? And?
Two, two of the four.
Two of the four, okay. And then you opened it up to the rest of the district just as a precaution? Or were there other schools that were also brought to your attention?
No, as far as I know, Mrs. Doherty, correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe it was just, we had noticed it in Lynn Croft and then a teacher noticed it in Nut Swamp. But because they're all using the same, you know, HVAC systems, you know, the weather outside then, you know, is the same on all of them, you know? Just the other factors are very similar between elementary schools. That's why we decided to do every, every school. You know, the weather's the same outside at the middle and high schools too. So we said, listen, you know, to make everyone feel safe and secure walking back in the building, including us, feeling safe and secure, welcome back in all our buildings. We felt that this was the, the, the right thing to do before, you know, we actually opened our doors.
Next is Ashley Stud.
I think I'm hearing a resounding theme that we would like to know what the Plan B is, if there is one, and what contingencies have taken place. Like have we contacted the state to see if we can go virtual for a few days? And that we're rolling out Chromebooks to the kids come, you know, Monday, the 13th, if things aren't looking great. Thanks so much for all you guys' support.
Okay, yes, you know, we, we, all those things are, yes.
Next is Stacy Jones.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak again. I just had a follow-up question and I got cut off before. I am concerned because you said it is five results back and four have shown mold. But what also, I guess I'm not clear on is, you keep saying everything's on the table, there's no real contingency plan. If there's remediation that pushes you past nine 13. But you were able to have them specially test the high school gyms and locker rooms so they could be used for today's football game. But you don't yet have a plan for the students to learn if mold is uncovered in more of these schools in time for the nine 13 open date. So so far you're four for five with mold. You know, that's pretty big odds based on your current sample. We won't know till Tuesday or Wednesday. So my two questions are as follows. One, the ones that are currently in remediation, like what is the timeframe for Lynn Croft and Nut Swamp? In terms of time, you said the work has already started there. How long is that going to take before they can retest to clear those two schools that are already being worked on? Just as an example from what you know today. And then my second question is, in terms of if you have, say the rest of the building's clear or you have half of the buildings clear, are you going to allow all the schools that have clearance to open on the 13th and work a contingency plan for those that do not? Or are you making this a district-wide decision? So say they clear, you know, say all the middle schools or all the high schools or half of each and half of the elementary schools come back clear, but the other half come back with issue. Are you going to take all of the district schools that could be open and not allow them to open because of issues in other buildings? Or are those schools going to be able to open on nine 13? And you're going to create a contingency plan for those that are not? And that's what I think we need a clear understanding of. Thank you.
Mrs. Doherty, do you want to take the first part of that?
We anticipate that the work that is going on right now at Lynn Croft and Nut Swamp will definitely be concluded next week. So, you know, those efforts are the underway. You know, as far as any other building that needs to be addressed, you know, the timeline on that is going to depend on, you know, exactly how many rooms are impacted in that building. So that's what we are in the process of putting together right now. But we are working on making a plan for how to proceed through the work that's ahead for us and prioritizing it in a way that would be the most efficient, you know, to get things done and expand the workforce, you know, if we have to, as far as the remediation team goes.
And the second part to your answer is, yes, that's definitely something we're looking at is, you know, not keeping the entire district out. If, if some schools, you know, were not able to be completed by then. But, you know, again, it, those are all speculative at this point.
Next is Lauren. I do not have a last name, so if you could please provide it for the record, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Lauren Abramson. I want to say thank you for being on Zoom and holding this. I find it funny that you're not there in person because it's unsafe. But via Zoom, we can hear you. And otherwise I can't participate in these meetings. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. I also want to point out that if you look for mold in schools, you will find mold in schools. So I'm, I would venture to guess that if you are going four out of five, then you're probably going to find mold in almost all of your schools. And then my question is that if I recall correctly, you did not budget to the tax cap. And so I'm curious how this is being paid for.
So as, as far as the financial end of it goes, we have a maintenance reserve that we can use to, you know, pay for things that are unexpected and not budget. We also have been discussing and filed, we filed a claim with our insurance company. And, you know, we will be working through that end as well.
I don't, I don't remember what the first part of the question was. Does anyone remember what the first part of the question was? I don't remember.
Did you repeat it? Lauren?
I think it was, if you're going to look for mold, you're going to find it.
Yeah, I don't think it was a question, I think it was a comment.
A comment.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's true, but there's, there's mold that requires, you know, our, you know, contractors to do remediation. And then there's, you know, a spot of mold here or there that might be from an air conditioning leaking that we, we have to, you know, we have to remediate, but not in the sense that it's a whole room, you know what I mean? So, yes, in that sense, it's right. But, you know, although all our units in our elementaries are the same, you know, there's, there's different, there's a lot that goes into it, that there might be something just a little bit different that's not making mold grow in one place, but is making mold grow in another place, so.
Well, it's not all dependent upon the HVAC system too. There's other environmental factors in each building.
Yeah, there's many of the factors, yes.
And when the tests are done, they're, they're, you know, the results are measured against, you know, acceptable or expected levels and compared to outside levels. So it's, it's not just the presence, you know, to your point, it's not just the presence of mold spores, but whether it's something that is, you know, the safe level or makes sense or, you know, you know, compared to what the norms are.
Okay, next is Amanda Astorita.
Hi, I just wanted to say, I know that the issues at Lynn Croft were reported and nothing was done about it. So I was just wondering what the procedure is for reporting mold issues. Should staff just go directly to the Department of Health? That's my first question. And my second question is, what is being done regarding the testing and/or monitoring of the health of students or staff who've been in those affected buildings?
Well, to answer your first question, you know, again, I'm not aware of any issues that were unreported or not addressed. But going in to answer, you know, who would you report to? I mean, if it was somebody in the building that identified something that they felt needed to be addressed, you know, the first, the first stop or the first person that they should speak to is their building principal. And their building principal then would speak to the facilities department or whoever, really the facilities department to make sure that we would look at it and evaluate it and see if it's something that needs to be addressed. But, you know, that definitely should be communicated to building administration. And building administration would, you know, reach out to the appropriate people in facilities and so forth. It wouldn't be, you know, a direct report to the Department of Health. It would be something that the district would be responding to.
And next is Lolly Tor.
Hi, thanks for having, taking my question again. So I just wanted to ask a question that I'd asked before that, that wasn't answered. Is there a plan to have meetings going forward via Zoom?
Not at this time.
And next is Jamie Sonacore.
Yeah, my question for the record is, what is the date that the administration was made aware of the mold problem? And what is the date that the board was made aware of the mold problem?
We don't have those dates right here on hand. So right now, our focus is to find out where the mold is, remediate it and, and, and determine how to keep it from coming back. That, that's our, that's our focus. That is taking up all our time right now. The whys and the whens, that comes later. Right now, it's how are we going to get through this? How are we going to get it done? And how are we going to make sure it's not going to come back?
And next is Dana Brink.
My follow-up question to what I had asked earlier is, are you planning or are you doing already? Are you updating the parents of the schools once results come in? So those parents can at least plan accordingly of the anticipative remediation timeframe? I know Marilyn, you've mentioned multiple times that it's premature for a contingency plan. As a working parent, I definitely don't think it is. I need to know if my kid is going to be in school, going to be virtual, ideally as soon as possible. So if my school comes back as positive or negative, will you let me know like the day you find out? And then what the anticipation, anticipated timeframe is?
We will provide as much information as we can when we get it, okay? We have not reported out to River Plaza yet, but that will come shortly. We were able to report out to the schools that we did find issues in. We felt that was more important. But we will be reporting out to River Plaza shortly.
Okay, next is Kathy. Don't have a last name, so if you could please provide it for the record, that would be great.
Yeah, hi, my name is Kathleen Brown. I have lived in Middletown for 32 years. My kids went to Middletown schools. I've taught in Middletown for 25 years and have just retired. My question is, um, what exactly are you doing to remediate the HVAC conditions in the buildings? Because in my years of teaching there, my air conditioner didn't work for most of the time I was in my classroom. And there were complaints in my building about mold and moldy smells and finding issues of mold. And basically, nothing was done. So a lot of us are concerned. I'm no longer in my building anymore. And I'm, have mixed emotions about not being there anymore. However, I am concerned because I don't think these issues are truly being addressed by the administrators in the buildings. And I think that when someone expresses concern about mold in the buildings, it's being brushed over. So now it's all come to a head. And I'd like to know not only what's being done about the mold, which I assume is remediation, but I also want to know what's being done about the HVAC units, which, having been there for years, I was on a first-name basis with the people that came in and fixed these units because they don't work correctly. The filters don't work correctly. And that's a huge concern for everybody and every child and every parent in this district.
Well, I mean, at the beginning of the meeting, we did speak about the fact that our approach to this issue is twofold. You know, the first part of it being the addressing of the immediate problem, the remediation of the mold and making sure that the buildings are addressed properly so that they can reopen. But the second and equally important piece is to come up with a plan to work with the equipment that we have in the short term to stabilize the climates in the buildings and make sure that the buildings do not, are not, have the humidity and moisture in them that would cause this problem to occur. The long-term solution, of course, is to address the replacement of all of these units in the elementary schools because they are aging. And it is time to talk about a replacement. And we have, you know, the administration, the board, we, we've discussed, you know, the fact that this is going to have to be a project that we, we find a way to execute in, in the short term. But in the, in the meantime, until all those units can be replaced, whether, you know, it's not going to happen overnight. You know, we are working on a plan to have supplemental equipment and management of the equipment that we have in order to, you know, improve the conditions so that we won't have an issue like this.
Okay, next is Megan Callis.
Hi, thank you for taking my second round of questions. I just wanted to, a follow-up on a comment that was made in regards to, quote, mold that requires contractors to do remediation. Can you tell me specifically the species of mold that you're talking about? In addition, I really am grateful, Ms. Doherty, for your knowledge in terms of the mold and the fact that indoor mold versus outdoor mold, those are tasks that need to be done. I'm curious about humidity levels in the schools in terms of what are those humidity levels in each of those school systems? Particularly what levels are maintained during the summer? And that the schools that, where mold has been found, are those building vents being cleaned? And if so, how?
I'm not going to be able to answer specifically regarding humidity levels in the schools, species of mold. I know that when the test, when the tests are being done, species of mold are being identified. But I, you know, I can't answer that question extemporaneously here at, at the meeting. I'm not, you know, and I appreciate you talking about, you know, I'm, I'm getting more knowledge of this every, every hour, but I'm certainly not able to address that off the top of my head. But those are, are all part of the results that we'll be getting back and, and sharing, you know, in, in a format and forum that, that will be determined. And as far as, I'm sorry, I don't remember what the last part of your question was.
You already adjusted, Amy, she was asking about humidity levels.
Right, okay.
And next is Jason Nadal.
Hi, thanks for taking my question. First, I'd like to thank Principal Ferry for quick updates on, once you found out there was mold in New Monmouth School. Second, I piggyback off Ms. Booker's comments about make the test results, the reports public. Curious about the format, if that's going to be in a redacted format or if it's going to be, you know, the reports that you're given from the agency. And secondly, I'm curious to hear if those reports talk about causal factors with mold, give recommendations as to long-term solutions to prevent things. Thank you.
Well, the sample reports themselves won't be giving recommendations. But then again, that's what we have also asked our environmental consultant to do for us. And, you know, again, not just to address the immediate problem, but also to give us recommendations and solutions to get us through the short term until we can have a longer-term solution. As far as the format of results presentation, I, you know, again, we haven't determined that yet. You know, I'm not, you know, we'll have to see what makes sense. You know, that would be something that would be understandable by the public and give the, you know, the full amount of information.
And next we have Laura. Don't have a last name, so Laura, you could please provide it for the record. That would be appreciated. That would be appreciated.
Hi, this is Laura Akt. I know you, you mentioned that if we needed to hire more research, resources that we would. I mean, honestly, at this point, it sounds like we're at that point. I'd just like to know, you know, when will that decision be made? Being that tomorrow is Friday, we're going into a long holiday weekend. I'm really concerned as I think, you know, most parents on this call are that this just is not going to be completed by the 13th. And I just feel like at this point that 100% of what is available to us and what we can, whatever the school needs to do to expedite this process, needs to be done. And also just quickly, I think it is important to know the day that this issue was found and brought to the attention of the administration and the board. And I'd just like to know how we find out that information. Thank you.
Amy, can you answer that one?
As far as the, the time that, I mean, you know, like we said, I think at the top of the meeting, we've been working on this since, and you know, forgive me because I don't have timelines in front of me and I'm losing track of days, but I, I know it was at least since last week or maybe the end of the week before that. Again, it was sort of in, in stages that this was unfolding. You know, there were a few rooms that were affected over at Linkcroft that our facilities department visually saw, you know, that we addressed internally and we're having a consultant come and test to make sure that the internal procedures were sufficient. But in the timeframe between that and, you know, when we actually had consultants come on site, you know, we saw that the issue was continuing and in fact, you know, getting worse. So at that point, you know, as an administrative team and we discussed, you know, possible ways to address it and whether we, you know, we should expand the analysis inspection to the entire school, which we ultimately ended up doing. And then, you know, ultimately we ended up having a meeting with the facilities committee of the board earlier this week to give them, you know, the scope of what had been going on so far and what we were looking to do going forward. So I, I'm sorry if I'm not naming all specific dates. I don't have that in front of me. It's kind of like I said, been unfolding over the last week and a half or so.
Next is Amanda Astorita.
Hi, yeah, the second part of my question wasn't addressed. I just wanted to know, like for the record, is there any concern for the safety and health of the students or staff who have been in those affected buildings? And what is being done regarding the testing or monitoring of their health?
So one thing that we have learned in working with our consultant over the last week or so is that, and we've actually seen it ourselves on site because we've been looking at all the buildings and areas that we will look at one day and have, have no evidence and no signs of any mold growth. We've gone back a couple of days later and it's been there. And, you know, our consultant has confirmed the fact that, you know, this, you know, these type of blooms can develop, you know, over a 36-hour period, you know, as short as that. So we don't, we know that these, you know, this is a current bloom that, you know, we're actually looking at. It's changing, you know, as, you know, as we've been looking at it. So if anyone, you know, if we had had any complaints, you know, if, or we haven't had any staff really spending prolonged time in the buildings over the last week or so. They've been just coming in to set up and since, I'm trying to, I'm sorry, the, the week has gone so fast, but the buildings have been closed to staff, I believe, since Tuesday, Mrs. Walker. Is that when we, right? So there really hasn't been staff in the buildings at that time and we haven't been running our summer programs for a couple of weeks now. So I don't know if that, you know, if that answers your question, but.
And next is Mitra Bussler. Just have to unmute.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so you finally provided an answer to Ms. Tor and myself and Mrs. Barrero and the other callers who all implored you to restore routine Zoom access to these meetings. Sadly, your answer was no, you're not going to do it. You have no plans to restore a standard remote option for public participation. So please help me out here because from where I'm sitting, it's really hard to interpret this as anything other than contempt for the rights of members of our community who cannot participate in these meetings in person. So if there is another reason, please present it now. That would be your cue to respond to me, not to go silent and move to the next caller. I'm listening.
We have no plan at this time.
And next, I don't have a name, just initials. If you could please provide it for the record, that would be great.
Yes, my name is Kathy Raza. I find it the absolute height of hypocrisy that all of you sitting here in your cozy little homes pivoted to Zoom to keep yourselves healthy, to keep yourselves safe. But yet we don't get afforded that, that same care and concern when we are paying the taxes along with you and we're treated to very little of any kind of regard for our health. And also I'd like to say, the way this board has handled the atrocious behavior in this, in, in the attendees of these meetings, all of them unmasked, is also reprehensible. You all should be ashamed of yourselves for not stepping up and stopping that, especially you, Mrs. Menewies as president. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
And next we have Michelle Vitali. Just have to unmute, Michelle. Michelle may be having some difficulty. We'll keep her in the queue. But we will move on to our next speaker, who is Kathy. I don't have a last name, so if you could please provide it for the record, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, hi, it's Kathy Brown again. I had asked a question previously and then I had a follow-up press question and I was cut off. So apparently we're not allowed to follow up with questions. So my follow-up question is what are exactly you doing about the air conditioning units or the HVAC units in these classrooms where they are duct taping filters together and throwing filters in there which are supposed to be COVID, whatever the word is, COVID positive COVID filtering? And we're still, these, these air conditioner units aren't working. The, no matter, even if the COVID compliance, thank you. Even if the, the air conditioners are not working, they're not removing the moisture from the rooms. There is still mold buildup. And I would like to know, what are they doing about this? You can't possibly replace these units and, and expect these classrooms to continue for this school year. It's not realistic. So what are you going to do to fix this and remediate this? And my other question follows up with my previous caller. Why are there no Zoom calls? Because what this person said was exactly 100% on target. There are people that do not want to go to meetings without wearing, I mean, without wearing masks or with people that aren't wearing masks. And yet you refuse to continue with Zoom meetings where people can ask questions like this. Because I personally wouldn't go to a meeting without a mask or in a meeting with people that are unmasked, let alone board members that are unmasked. So here's my question. Let me clarify. Number one, what are you doing about the heating and air conditioning units in these classrooms that are faulty? That are allowing these rooms to be humid where your paper is wet in the classroom? Your papers are wet, your books are wet, everything is wet and disgusting. What are you doing about that? That is totally a mold environment, like people, like mold would love it. And my second question is what are you doing about the Zoom meetings? Because I'm hearing more and more people that are so disheartened that there is one side that says we don't need Zoom meetings and then there's the side that continues to have precedence. Do I need to clarify?
No, so, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. I thought you were.
Yeah, I'm almost done. Um, I'm looking at my notes and that's basically it. How are you protecting the staff and the kids? And where is the administrative accountability? When you're reporting that your classroom has soaking wet papers, everything is wet in it and nothing is done. You're reporting it to your building administrator, which is in the chain of command, and then nothing gets done. And so now you've reached a point where people have come in to fix their classrooms and the walls and the books and the desks are covered in mold. And the second part of that question, because I know I can't get a response because I have to call back or raise my hand again, but what's being done about the Zoom meetings? Because there's so many people that will not come, that don't feel safe. Those are my questions. Thank you.
So for the first part of your questions related to the operation and the maintenance on the HVAC units, I'm actually going to ask our director of facilities, who's on this call, Walter Cahill, to address that part of it and talk about the, the maintenance and the filter replacements and those procedures that are done with the units.
Okay, the units, they are old, but we tend to still get parts for them. And they are repaired on a work order basis. If we get a complaint or, or a, a work order submitted, they are repaired timely. The filter changes are done quarterly. Everything is, is kept clean. To date, I have never received a work order for, you know, moist papers or, or wet walls or anything like that. If that were, you know, if that was something that was a complaint, we certainly would, would address it. But just like with, with any of the systems, we, we have a work order system. Everything goes through that work order system. And we have very few open work orders for, for rooms that are, are not operational at this time. But they, you know, they are old systems and, you know, every, every day we have, you know, a unit that goes down and we, we repair others. So it, you know, it's, it's a constant process.
And next is Stacy Jones.
Hi, I wanted to just follow up because I wanted a little bit of clarity on the timeframe that you referenced in answer to my question before I asked what the remediation timeline was for the two that are currently underway. And Ms. Doherty, you basically said that you anticipate they'll be done by the end of next week in time for the opening on the 13th. I guess my question is, we've already identified two additional schools that haven't had work started. So does that mean that those are going to already run over the, the date of the 13th? And then those that are still rolling in, you know, that we don't know the extent of the work that can be done? If the ones that are already underway that just started in the last day or two are going to take until the 13th to finish, how is it that you are anticipating ready to open the buildings on the 13th when you already have other ones that aren't yet being remediated? But will then extend past that timeframe and others that you don't even know what the remediation is that would need to be done?
So I think as we were discussing before, you know, the, the answer to that would be to get more teams working on remediation. So, you know, we've already discussed with our remediation firm that we're using, you know, the fact that there is expanded scope of work. They are working at, at securing more staff. We're also looking at bringing in other firms to assist, you know, all coordinated through our environmental consultant. But we may need to bring in, we're looking to bring in additional companies to address rooms in buildings other than what we had originally identified, you know, at Nut Swamp and Linkcroft. So, you know, that, the way to attack the rest of the work is to bring in more, more staff members to handle it.
And Mrs. Doherty, I would think I would just add that the amount of work that needs to be done in each school varies. Because it seems like there might be a perception that it's all the same. It varies depending on the amount of areas that need to be remediated.
Correct. I mean, there, we may end up having results in some buildings that, you know, only requires a couple of rooms to be touched. You know, where in other buildings it would be multiple rooms.
And next is Allison Sonter.
Hi, yes, my question is, what exactly caused this mold in the first place? I'm wondering if there were alterations made to the HVAC systems that, that caused the mold? And if so, what are we going to do to address that from not happening again in the future? That's all. Thank you very much.
So, so we've all heard repeated times from our consultant that mold, the mold is caused by moisture. The moisture levels in the buildings are at a, at a level that would be conducive for mold to grow. And the way that we need to address that is to look at what we have at our disposal to work, work to bring the moisture down in the buildings. One would be, one way would be to address, adjust set points and settings on our HVAC systems. We also discussed bringing in, as we're doing right now, dehumidifiers to bring down the humidity levels. And we are looking to procure dehumidifiers so that we have that to supplement the systems that we have in place in the buildings. As was explained to us by our consultant, HVAC systems are not dehumidifiers. You know, you, running them will have an impact on the humidity in the building, but they, but they are not dehumidifiers, the, the systems that we have. So having these supplemental, having the supplemental equipment to do that when we need it, when the humidity levels get higher, will also assist us in doing that. But we are dedicated to working to get a plan together with our consultant to work with the tools that we have and, and things that we can procure to assist us, our building environments and stay more, less humid in order to prevent something of this magnitude of happening again.
Okay, next we have Rich and Lisa Liebeck. Please provide a name for who is speaking for the record. That would be great.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Rich Liebeck. I have two children in the school district. My question ironically, as long as I, you have to wait to get to talk, does kind of bounce off the previous question that was brought up or the previous answer, more or less. And it goes to ignoring that some of the schools have mold. And somebody said earlier, if you look for mold, you'll find mold. Mold, which obviously comes from moisture. So, and like you had said, Amy, the moisture can cause a bloom in 36 hours. Is the test just looking for mold that's existing today? Maybe tomorrow when they do it or the next day? Or are the moisture levels actually being tested, found, find the moisture and then actually eliminate the problem as opposed to there's moisture there today that's not mold? We're going to work on not adding more moisture, but that moisture is still going to become mold in time? If, if my question makes sense.
It ma, it makes total sense. You know, the air testing that's being done. It ma- it makes total sense. You know, the air testing that's being done uh, is not just for mold spores, but it's also the um, the cut. I don't know if characteristics is the right word, but you know, measuring the humidity and other properties of the uh, of the air in the room. So to your point, you know, to identify spaces where the humidity may be, the relative humidity may be too high or or other indicators in the air uh, that would be conducive to mold growth. If we see that during these tests, you know, then the air itself would be addressed to bring down the humidity or whatever adjustments need to be made so that we could prevent this from happening. So I think that answers your question.
Next is Carrie Barrero.
Hi, um, so my question is about the dehumidifiers. Are those going to be, I have a couple of questions, but the first one is, are those going to be something that is installed like permanently? Or are these like temporary things? Like large dehumidifiers and not something that's going to be installed within our HVAC system? So that, you know, turn it on it, flip the switch kind of deal. Is that something that's possible?
They're not, they're not, we're talking about portable units that we can bring in to deploy when when needed. And we also uh, can be monitoring, you know, we can ha- get devices where we can monitor the humidity in the rooms and or you can even, you know, basically feel it sometimes, but when we know that the when we know the humidity is high and we know that the systems need assistance, we can bring these units in, run them uh, when the schools aren't occupied, you know, overnight or after school. Bring the levels down so that we can bring the humidity down in the school and and not have these issues.
I guess I was thinking about something more advanced so that when the, when something detects the moisture, it can kick on the dehumidifier.
Well, well, definitely that that would be a component, you know, as we look to replace the units in the elementary schools, that certainly would be something that we would be looking at. I mean, the technology is very different now than when it was when those units were put in.
Right, right. Thinking, I wasn't sure if it would be um, work with what we have now. So, okay. And the other question is, Joan, what other reason do you have besides your ego that you won't continue Zoom meetings for people? I don't understand your reasoning. It is no good reasoning. You've got at least 20 people calling you tonight. More people have spoken up about Zoom tonight than showed up at your meeting to talk about unmasking kids. So I don't understand why you won't do that, but you're willing to fight to put our kids at risk. It it's it's unconscionable how selfish you are being. That you are, you are icing out more than half of this community. You are probably the worst president this BOE has ever seen. All ego, all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Carrie.
And hephernan and tobacco not showing up, what happened to fight for our kids now?
Carrie, 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 excuse me. Carrie, can we stick to the issue here? We need to get our kids back into school. We're trying to question the questions from parents about mold. And that's what we'd like to stick to. So if there's anybody else who has not asked your question about the mold, please raise your hand at this time. Because it's coming up to 10:30 and we want to make sure every parent's question about the mold issue is answered.
And next we have Lauren. Don't have a last name, so if, Lauren, could please provide it for us? That would be great.
Hi, Lauren Abramson again. Uh, I have two questions. The first one is for, I believe it's Mr. Capone's finance and facility share. Because I asked about money before and how this is being paid for. Um, but there's not much in the emergency reserve due to not going to cap, so I'm curious what the projected expense is. I'm curious how we're being billed for this, um, or especially now that there's a mention of additional companies. So, um, is it hourly for these companies and the consultant and Servpro? Or are they, are they hourly? Are they by man? Are we paying more for overtime over the weekend? Um, and I do have another question, so I don't know if you want to answer that first and then come to the other question or if I should.
Why don't you, why don't you ask both and then they'll answer?
Okay, so that one I'm thinking is for Mr. Capone. My second question is, um, there are a lot of conspiracy theories around town. Um, regarding the timing of the mold after all of the mask drama, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So in the interest of transparency with 16 of you on the screen right now, can you confirm that you are giving us all of the information that you currently have?
Well, Mr. Capone, I'll just say, if you want me to address any of the questions that were asked, I understand they were directed to you, but I I certainly would be able to.
You should answer them.
Amy, if you can just give an update on what is in the reserve and any other questions you'd like to answer on that. Yes, thank you.
Right. So first of all, I I, as I referenced before, we would be looking if we needed to, to take funds out of our maintenance reserve. We don't maintain an emergency reserve, but we do have a maintenance reserve. And uh, the board did authorize a deposit into the maintenance reserve in June to supplement what was already there. Uh, so that, you know, there are, there are funds in the maintenance reserve. Uh, and uh, so we would have those monies to draw from. Uh, in addition, like I mentioned before, we have initiated an insurance claim. And depending upon, you know, how that that proceeds through, you know, there's a potential for our insurance cover our company to cover uh, some or a a good deal of these costs, but we have to work through the claim. But we do have, like I said, the the maintenance reserve uh, with and I'm sorry, you you kind of caught me off guard a little bit with the question, but I I, we do have.
A million and a half dollars plus.
It's about $500,000 in the maintenance reserve, you know, the rest of it is in capital reserve. So, but we 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 would have our maintenance reserve available to, you know, to utilize for this if we needed to. And this, and I don't, oh, and as far, you know, the companies do work on a um, you know, you know, some of the billing is done on an hourly basis for labor. You know, there's equipment costs, so they're also done on a mostly on a weekly basis, you know. And our consultant is also uh, working on an hourly basis as well. And, you know, as the work proceeds, you know, we get an idea of what the the hours would be and the time. But, you know, as we've indicated, we don't have the total scope of the work yet because we are still working through uh, the schools and and what, you know, what else may be identified.
And I can uh, speak to the 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 first question about um, the facts or or, you know, or this board, whatever. Um, um, saying everything we know um, because of conspiracy theories. And I can speak for myself and I can speak to what I've heard, been told to the board. And uh, yes, um, you know, as you know, um, yeah, I'm I'm still trying to work on the conspiracy theory thing, you know. But but yes, we are providing the facts as we know them. Um, like I said, there's still tests out there. There there's still some unknowns, but right now we're providing the facts as we know them.
And next, I don't have a first name on this account, so if you could, please provide your full name for the record. That would be great. Hello?
Are they muted, Chris?
They are not muted. Um, they have unmuted their mic. Um, but I don't.
Hear me?
Yes, they have you.
Okay, sorry, it was my headphones. Hi, this is Melissa Isabelle. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you for having the in-person meetings and I'm excited to get back to them. Um, but I do have a question regarding why the schools can't be occupied at this time. Uh, especially because it was stated that there are only a few areas of each building. Uh, all of the students and staff are being forced to wear masks to prevent the transmission of COVID. A particle that is point 0.6 to point 1.4 microns. Mold spores are two to 10 microns in size. That's much, much larger than COVID. And since everyone is clearly convinced that masks stopped COVID, mold shouldn't even be an issue. Let's just go to school.
So I I think we're not occupying the building for the reasons that we stated earlier because we had two schools that had mold and we wanted to ensure that our buildings were safe for students and staff to go into. Um, while masks do help, like you said, they they will block. We, our our consultant actually did um, say this, he was asked that question and he he said it, they do help, they do block some, but they don't block everything. Masks are not 100% you know, blocking every bit of air. There's, you know, loose parts around the side, et cetera. So, I mean, they help, but they don't, they don't stop the mold. That's not what they're they're made for.
And next we have Jesse Wade.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, uh, so my question is in regards to the humidity. Um, a- and so I I I like the idea of the dehumidifiers. Um, but I I'm a contractor. I deal with mold remediation. So I understand a lot of what's going on. I don't know the extent of what you have going on. However, I know nine out of 10 times, they'll be coming from an air conditioning system where condensation is more of an issue than humidity. So if condensation is building on some of the ducts, which is causing the moisture to build enough of of an area that the mold can grow, perhaps shutting off the air conditioning and just letting the fans blow to circulate the air without creating condensation on the ductwork and running the dehumidifiers would be enough to at least buy time, especially with the end of summer and coming into a season where heat is going to be used sooner. So perhaps that would get the kids into the school faster. Um, and then also on top of that, um, has any of the filters that have changed? Um, the 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 style of fi- filter due to the COVID um, regulations? Perhaps that has restricted some of the airflow, which is causing more of the condensation to build up? Allowing the mold to grow. Has anybody thought of either of these two solutions?
To adjust, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
To adjust the uh, question about the filters, we, and we did have uh, extensive discussions uh, about filters at the beginning of last year when we were talking about bringing everybody back into the buildings uh, after, you know, during the pandemic and so forth. And um, and I'll, you know, if Walter, if you want to jump in at all. But I I do know that we are using the filters that are manufacturers uh, specifications for the systems. And and I know we did speak with our uh, architect and engineers about uh, the topic of filters. And, you know, we are aware that using filters that aren't uh, proper for the, for the units that we have would actually be worse. Uh, you know, we we can't use a a higher, a thicker filter than what the the units are are equipped to handle. So we we are using the specified filters for our systems. You know, as far as the operation of the HVAC equipment, again, that is something that we're working with our consultant on. As far as trying to uh, alter set points, you know, for shut offs and maintaining temperature and and finding uh, a better mix of of those temperature set points. Uh, in addition to monitoring uh, the humidity in the room so that we can uh, keep the the climate in in a way that it won't encourage the the growth of mold.
Well, we did upgrade the filters from a MERV seven to a MERV eight, which did not have much of an airflow uh, impact. And it was the uh, the maximum capacity recommended by the manufacturer. So it's in in the guidelines of what the ma- manufacturer recommended.
And next is Raquel Maddick.
Hi, um, I understand you are working on contingency plans. And as I can tell from this meeting, there's 99% of us are more worried about that. Um, do you plan on rolling this out on September 8th? Or are you going to wait until the Sunday before on the 12th?
We will provide information, um, as soon, like I I said this before, as soon as we have information that, you know, we we get, whether it's test results, you know, we will timelines, we will be rolling that out to the community. And like I said, we're going to have a meeting next week where where we will have more information.
And next is Suzanne. Um, I do not have a last name, so if you could please provide it for the record, that would be great.
Sure. Hi, Suzanne Siegler. Um, I have a kindergarten starting in Linkcroft and I'm just curious if we are going to um, definitely have orientation regardless of the start date. I'm just afraid of like new school, new system, meltdown city, if we can't be there to introduce them to their new surroundings. So is that a priority? Before school starts, if possible, um, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Ye- yes, before school starts, if it's possible, it is a priority. But school being safe is first priority. Alright, it's actually.
Okay, next is Joe. Um, again, I don't have a last name, so if Joe, you could please provide that for the record. That would be wonderful.
Yeah, hi, uh, Joe Jerez. Um, this is to the people that are uh, want to continue the Zoom. Zoom didn't work for the kids and uh, they're not going to, it's not going to work for adults. So um, I think being in person at the board meetings is uh, priority. And um, on top of that, if you're too scared to go to his uh, to a board meeting, then you shouldn't be going out to eat. Shouldn't be going food shopping. You just, you know, stay locked in your house. So to all these people that are giving you guys slack for trying to cancel the Zoom, then they should just stay in the house and not leave.
Okay, next is Lauren. Don't have a last name, so Lauren, if you could please provide it for the record, that'd be great.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Lauren Anderson. I'm in Linkcroft. Um, I have two questions. Uh, the first is, can someone clarify a chain of command for complaints about the mold? Uh, I have heard a couple of teachers, past and present, in this past week, since you sent out the memo, have stated that they have complained about mold in the past and nothing has been done. And I know Walter had said that he had not gotten any work orders. So I'm just curious, who would a teacher complain to if they were worried about mold or moisture in their classroom? And how do they then follow up to see if anything is being done about that? Um, and then uh, just, I know a lot of people are saying you should continue on with the Zoom. I think that's a great idea. I also don't see any reason why you can't also hold your meetings in person and use an iPad or a laptop to have a Zoom portion of that meeting for those of us who may not be able to attend. And those of us who have been careful not to go to restaurants or bars or anything else because we have family members that we care for who are unhealthy and, you know, ve- very at risk.
Do we want to address the chain of command?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Walter.
Uh, yeah, typically, uh, the teacher would uh, speak with the head custodian first. Uh, and then to the principal of the school. And they can always reach out directly to facilities if they're, if they're not getting uh, response and uh, and they feel as though uh, you know, things have uh, have gone on, they haven't, uh, they haven't heard anything back. They can reach out to uh, to me directly or one of the supervisors. And uh, and we'll certainly give them an answer as to whether a work order has been uh, been submitted and what the process is.
Okay, at this time, we're going to try to wrap it up, so we're, we're not going to take repeat callers at this time. If there's anybody who did not get to ask their question, please raise your hand and Chris will call on you.
Um, there is only one uh, in the queue who has not asked a question yet. That was Pamela from the very beginning. Um, so we'll try her again. See if the uh, microphone issues have subsided. So Pam, if you could please provide your name of last name for the record, that'd be great.
Yes, it's Pamela Galano. Thank you. I was just calling, trying to find out um, if, if, if this prolongs with the mold and you decide to do yet another.
and you decide to do yet another kind of district-wide decision, are we allowed? While not ideal, are the students allowed to start remotely so that we're not going to school until the end of June or losing out on Easter vacations? Or do we need permission from the governor in order to do that? And if the fact is that we do need permission from the governor in order to do that, has any communication started to at least get that process rolling so that we're not then stuck potentially on whatever next Thursday or Friday is where we're not, we're not ready to open up the schools? And yet we don't have any communication to say, yes, you can start remote or not?
There, there's, there's new rules for remote. It has to be at least three days. And we have to be considered in a state of emergency, but not by the governor. It's our local health department who we're in contact with constantly. They are aware of this situation.
Chris, are there any new hands?
There are no new hands in the queue.
Okay, at this time, we're going to ask anyone else in the queue to please forward any of your other questions to Mrs. Walker and Mrs. Darty. And we will be setting up another meeting for next week to update after we get the test results. Is that correct, Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and we thank everybody for coming out tonight, asking your questions. And we will try to keep you as informed as we can as we go along. And hopefully by the next meeting, we would, you know, have more results for you and hopefully be able to give some kind of a direction on where we might be going, if possible. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm moved.
I'm moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Good night, everyone.